Okay, we have less than a minute. Thirty seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Okay, good morning, everybody. I hope everybody has had a chance to dry off before the meeting. It's a great rainstorm. Welcome to the Wednesday, June 21st, Board of Cedric County Commissioners. And thank you again all for watching on Channel Eight and YouTube station. And so with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
In vacation to be led by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
County announcements, Nicole, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. We will start off today with the Register of Deeds Office. They have been enhancing its outreach and some great services for veterans that are free to safeguard the benefits they've earned. Strategic Communications produced a video that's now on the Register of Deeds website about DD-214s, and we posted it on social media with plans to run it several times throughout the year. Before we share the video with you, I have Chief Deputy Kinley Ziering and Program Officer Gage Hunt here from the Register of Deeds Office to give you some more information.
Okay. Good morning and welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kinley Ziering, Chief Deputy Registered Deeds. Thank you to Communications for creating this video. Tanya wanted me to speak on her behalf about the Veteran and Military Discount Program that was established in 2019. We partner with the VA and local coalitions to help bring awareness to our veterans about the free services we offer. Currently, we're the only county in the state of Kansas that offers to go off-site to file the DD-214s, to provide the free certified copies, as well as issue the discount cards with the photo ID. Gage is here to provide us with some numbers on the DD-214 filings, as well as the discount card.
Okay, good morning.
Morning Commissioners, Gage Hunt, Program Officer for the Register of Deeds Office. So since the start of the program back in July of 2019, the Register of Deeds Office has filed 537 DD-214s and has issued 1,181 discount cards. Before the program started, however, the Register of Deeds Office would file, on average, about five to 10 DD-214s annually. So as you can see, the program has brought awareness to our local veterans about filing their DD-214s. We are also currently partnered with 60-plus businesses that are local here to Cedric County, and we would love to increase that number as well.
Very good.
All right, with that, we're going to preview our DD-214 video that we have for veterans.
The nation honors its veterans. Cedric County wants to protect the many benefits you've earned. Our Register of Deeds Office can safeguard your military discharge form, or DD-214, by filing it for free.
A lot of veterans will have their DD-214, like, folded up in their, you know, in their billfold, and that's the only copy they have. We actually give five certified free copies to all the veterans, so that's a great service for them, too.
So my DD Form 214, in my personal opinion, is probably one of the most important documents I'll ever have in my entire life. It's up there with my marriage certificate or my Social Security information.
Any type of benefits provided by the federal government for veterans, you need a DD-214 to provide, so that you can show that you were actually a veteran.
Basically, what it does is it proves I'm honorably discharged from the military. And so if you want to use it for a VA loan, or use it for tuition for college, for example.
Once the DD-214 is recorded by the Register of Deeds, it is not an open record. Only the veteran and immediate family can access it.
When we file a DD-214, it's available to your next of kin, or if you have a disaster, where you have a tornado or a fire in your home, you can always go back to our Register of Deeds, and they can pull up your DD-214 and provide it to you.
Cedric County considers this so important. We are the only county in Kansas to provide this service at special events, like this Veterans Benefit Resource Fair. And as an added incentive, veterans can get a free military discount card with their photo on it.
For example.
Guess who was first in line?
There are many, many companies and organizations, restaurants and so forth, that want to say thank you to our veterans. And the perfect way is to provide them some type of discount through their services. But it's difficult to prove that without some kind of IDs.
Since 2019, when the Military Discount Card Program began, the Register of Deeds has issued more than 1,000 cards to active-duty service members, National Guard and reservists, and veterans with an honorable or general discharge.
It's just a great, great thing to have. Makes me feel appreciated. Usually they'll say, hey, thank you for your service, I think. Yeah, I'm a veteran, I get to enjoy this, you know?
To apply for a military discount card of your own, or file a DD-214, contact the Register of Deeds Office on the first floor of the Ruffin Building in downtown Wichita. Protect the benefits you've earned, and let Cedric County salute your service.
Very nice, very good.
We just would like to encourage any veterans that have any questions to please contact our office, and we'll stand for any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you very much. And please pass on our thanks to Tanya Buckingham and everyone in your office that made this possible. I do have my card that I carry with me all the time. When I retired from the military, the one thing I didn't do was turn in my DD-214, because it has my Social Security number on the top of it. And I was very worried about that being a public record. And it wasn't until I started working for Cedric County that I learned that it is absolutely not a public record, that no one can walk in and pull my DD-214 out and have access to it. So mine is on file, I thank you very much for that, because it protects that very vital document in case we have any kind of a disaster and my home is destroyed or something, or my next of kin may need it in the future for some of the benefits that you have, even after you passed away. So thank you very much as a veteran, that I sincerely appreciate what the Register of Deeds Office has done to make this available to all of our veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Commissioner Howe.
I wanted to just echo the comments of Commissioner Dennis. This has been a great program, it's brought a lot of recognition to veterans, and I want to say thank you. And when veterans get that thank you at a retail shop or whatever, it just makes you feel really good. And as much as, as great as that is, I think the most important part is the safekeeping of that document. Back when I got, when I received my DD Form 214, I think I received a single copy, and it's a type written on a typewriter, it's very, very old. And so to get that replaced would be very difficult. So I'm just, I'm grateful that it's in safekeeping, and again, you gave me my five free certified copies. I was actually in my, I host a coffee at several different places per month. And yesterday at the coffee I hosted, one person at the table yesterday said they lost their DD Form 214. And I thought, here, it's just a great example of why that's so important, to get that filed for safekeeping. So thank you for the service to our veterans, I really appreciate that, and for being part of the program. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And thank you. And we rolled that out, what, in, right in the middle, or right at the beginning of COVID or something? It was like.
Yes, it did.
It was a, yeah, right before, it was a great, great benefit. And so, anyway, and so, thank you both for your, for your service, our two veterans that serve on the, on the commission. So again, our thanks. Any other comments? Don't see any, thank you.
We have another group here today to visit the commission. Cedric County Fire District One's special teams have been quite active this month, so we wanted to take the opportunity to give you an update on their teams and their happenings. Deputy Chief Crisp is here with some of his folks.
Good morning.
Good morning Chairman, good morning Commissioners, good morning Manager Stoltz. Brad Crisp, Fire Marshal, Cedric County Fire District Number One. We've been asked to kind of highlight some of the work that the men and women of Cedric County Fire District One have been doing over the last couple of months. I've brought a couple of members with me who are an integral part of our team. We have Captain Don Boone, who is the leader of the Technical Rescue Team on C-Shift. He works at Station 32, and he is working up towards his 20th year of service for the fire district. Also have Captain Nick Becker with me, who is the leader of our B-Shift hazmat team up at Station 33 in Mays. And Nick has just over 20 years of experience with the fire district. The fire district has two specialized teams, they have a Technical Rescue Team and a Hazmat Team. The Technical Rescue Team facilitates and goes to emergencies, for example, water emergencies, both above and below the water. They also do trench rescues, they do high-angle rescues, like on radio towers and at the top of grain elevators, as well as compromised structures, for example, those that get hit by tornadoes or a vehicle runs into them, they'll mitigate those emergencies. Our Technical Rescue Team has been really busy these last few months, and Captain Boone is going to talk about a few of those incidents. Our Hazardous Materials Team are experts in the field of mitigation. They also do some abatement, as well as hazard identification, and they've been very busy as well, and continue to be busy up until, including yesterday, with some of the white powder substances that have been going on in our region. And Captain Becker is going to speak to some of those incidents. So I'm going to step aside and let Captain Boone come and talk about the Technical Rescue Team briefly.
Morning, Captain. We've had a few incidents here recently, I'm going to talk about three of them. We had SUV recovery, we were called to assist the sheriff's office. There was a boater on a lake and hit a vehicle with the water being so low. We run these a lot more here in the recent days. So he hit the vehicle, called the sheriff's office, they come out, and they generally like us to come out to check the inside of the vehicle and around the immediate area of the vehicle, just to make sure there's no victims in the vehicle. And then once we confirm that there are no victims, we assist with the tow truck on hooking the vehicle up and pulling these vehicles out of the waterways. We had that call, we also had one at Cheney Lake, to where the, a boater found a Jeep in Cheney Lake with sonar. And that was the same deal, they requested us come out, check the vehicle, check the immediate area of the vehicle, and remove the vehicle from the water. We had a submersion on a skid steer, a guy was working around a lagoon and backed the skid steer into the lagoon. And this was an enclosed skid steer, so you can kind of see up in that top corner, yep, right there. He had his face pushed against that to get air. Luckily, they had a neighbor that was quick thinking and brought over a small tractor and hooked a chain onto it, as you see there, and was able to hold the skid steer up to where he did not, he kept his little air, air pocket there, until we arrived on scene and got him out, extricated him. So that was, he was a mess, for sure, but.
Morning. All right, so we've had two kind of big incidents here recently. We respond for the state in 19 counties in South Central Kansas to some of these communities, fire departments, volunteer departments, that just don't have the resources that we do. So these are two calls that we went out, out of county, and helped with. The first one being in Keeman County last week, a semi carrying ethanol rolled over on a highway. It was leaking, you can see it leaked almost half of its product out. We were able to use our drone to recon, which is very handy for us. It actually takes the place of an entry team. It saves us two guys, we can fly the drone down. We were able to see where it leaked and mitigate it with some, some, some booms, so. Next, everybody's, I think everybody's heard the white powder calls. Once again, these are on a state and federal level, so we've not only responded in Cedric County, but we've responded outside of Cedric County, several counties, small cities around here. KBI has asked us to go and just check for radiation, and then VOCs, which would be volatile organic compounds. We check those, and then it's handed off to them, so.
Wow, very nice.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for these two?
Yeah, Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you Chairman, just a couple things. Just a sincere thank you for the specialty work that you do. This is not something that is common knowledge, even most firefighters, lieutenants. What you do is incredibly important, and I think you do it many times. What you do is, you see in the media, but I'd also like to thank you for many of the things that you do that nobody sees. Both of you work in District Four, Park City, and then Mays, and I know personally that you're very involved in the community. I see you at schools, I see you at community events. And I just, I just want to give you a sincere thank you that, that those of us that work, or those of you that work in our fire district and Cedric County Fire, you understand the responsibility you have, and you're engaged in this community, and you're doing a damn fine job, so I just, I appreciate you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Howe.
You know, everyone thinks of a firefighter as being the guy that drives a truck and squirts water on a fire, but you guys show us there's a whole lot more to the job. I know that majority of your calls are medical calls, and so first responders, you're almost always first on scene, and that's, that's actually by design. We appreciate what you guys do for that, but then you start thinking about water rescue and underwater rescue, and grain bins, and tank cars, and radio towers, and on it goes. I just, I'm impressed that the skillset that you guys demonstrate each and every day is just, it's unbelievable, actually. So the idea of a firefighter, you know, just putting out fires is really not all a firefighter does any longer. It's a, it's a whole lot more than that. And so I want to say thank you, and appreciate, appreciate you guys personally. You guys do a tremendous job, and by the way, add Derby to that list, thank you.
Commissioner Dennis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to pass on my thanks. We get an email from either the chief or from emergency management every time something critical happens. So we're very aware of what you're doing and how that you're serving our community, and we thank you for that. But it really comes home, like last night, we had a big dinner with our legislators, and there were an awful lot of legislators there, and almost every single one of them received a letter. And so you were at their homes, because these terrorist actions actually sent them to their personal residences. And you touched the lives of a lot of people by doing that and protecting our community, because no one knew whether or not this white powder was dangerous or not. But you put your lives on the line to go in and find out whether or not that it had any kind of radiological or biological or anything, any type of thing that could harm those legislators. So on behalf of all the legislators that you served, I want to tell you thank you very much, because they, they recognized that, and we heard from them last night. Thank you.
And Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, I just want to basically just say thank you for everything that you guys do. I know when I rode out with fire one day and we got to a fire, you see so many people kind of backing up and kind of running away, and you guys run into it, and just the bravery that takes, it's just, it's incredible. So thank you for, you know, keeping all of us safe in this community, and we just, we really appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you all very much for your support. We appreciate the opportunity to highlight some of this recent work.
Yeah, it's great. I couldn't add to all the comments. Thank you Commissioners for your comments, and appreciate all the work.
Thanks again, Fire District One. Lastly, we will have a Household Hazardous Waste Event on June 24th. Apologies. Household Hazardous Waste Remote Collection Event on Saturday, June 24th, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. at Textron Aviation Beach Craft. The location is the Division Parking Lot E, Gate Six. For more information, visit cedriccounty.org, or you can find the information on our social media pages. And last but not least, we have a very special announcement. One of our own has hit a major milestone today, and it is our deputy, our deputy, our county councillor's Mike Papoun's retirement. This is his last meeting, and we wanted to take a moment to share with you all that he has done for Cedric County. In his time at Cedric County, he has been a senior attorney, an assistant county councillor. He has been Cedric County Government Relations Director, Assistant County Councillor, the chief attorney, acting county councillor. He retired in 2015. He missed us so much, he came back in 2018 as the interim county councillor, and has served since county councillor since then. And his last day will be in July. And so we wanted to take a moment to share some of these lovely gems brought to him by his family and friends. And we just wanted to take a special moment to thank him for his 36 years of service to the county and all that he's done for the citizens and all of us. So with that, Commissioners, if you have anything you'd like to share about Mr. Papoun, we would love to hear it.
Okay, well, last week, we actually had a series of comments that was kind of spontaneous, and, which meant that they were all, Mike, they were all heartfelt, and everything was said, a lot was said last week. So, you know, we appreciate you, and for those that can't see, he's really smiling really big right now. But anybody want to add to what we said last week? It's just great, so, yeah, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I appreciate you got your better half here, Sonya, today, so she's, I don't know how she puts up with you, honestly. But honestly, I did not know Mike Papoun before that he came on board with the county commission, but he's been a valuable mentor, advisor, someone that I could trust when I had issues and I didn't know who else to talk to, at least I could go in and sit in his office and tell him my issues, and he'd yell at me for a while. He's, he claims he's a Republican, sometimes I question that. But truly, he's a friend, and I'm going to miss him. Just about every meeting, working up to this day, I've been trying to talk him into staying. I know Justin doesn't want that to happen. But you're a gentleman, and I sincerely appreciate your friendship. I hope you stay in touch with us. Please send us those emails that you promised that you'd send, counter some of the other stupid emails that we receive, because we need a little bit of levity in our lives, because too many people really affect you negatively, affect all of us negatively, and you've always affected me positively. And again, as I said last week, the one thing that I have against attorneys is they never tell me what I can do, they always tell me what I can't do. So now that you're retired, you can tell me once in a while what I can do, so. You're a friend, and I appreciate you, and great, good luck in retirement. I know I've tried to retire about three times, and it hasn't ever stuck, so I hope yours doesn't stick either. Thank you.
Commissioner Howe.
You know, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say again, thank you for all you do for Cedric County. When you switch out to senior staff like county councillor, it's a, it's a big scary change. You've done a tremendous job. The institutional knowledge that you have is really important to understand our history and some of the cases that have, have caused us to do what we do today. Your, your knowledge is just incredible, but I know Justin's going to do a great job. His experience in local government's been fantastic. But to focus on you today, Mr. Papoun, I just want to say thank you for your service. I said last week, and I'll say it again, you're a friend, and I appreciate your wisdom. You have a lot of wisdom. And, you know, you, as Commissioner Dennis said, you tell us what we can't do. Well, sometimes you tell us what we don't want to hear, but you, you're very professional, and you're excellent, excellent attorney. I wish the state would have recognized you as the best, I think that you deserve that. Thank you Chairman.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, Mike, over the last couple of years, we got to know each other, and I just appreciate everything that you've done to help, as I was a new commissioner, help me understand really what was in the guidelines of what I could and couldn't do, and, you know, what my role was, and that was, it's been really important to me on how I govern, and so I just, I really appreciate that. And I want to hit on something that Commissioner Dennis said. When I was thinking about what should I say today, I think the one thing that kept coming to mind is just that you can make a situation that's not always very fun and turn it light. And so we're going to really miss that, walking out of some of these meetings that we have to sit in and kind of go on and on. You always made it, you made it fun, and we always were happy when we left, and most of the time, maybe not always, but most of the time. And I just, I appreciate that, and we're going to really miss you here, so thank you for everything you've done.
Okay, Commissioner Beatty.
Thank you Chairman. Mr. Papoun, you're a good man, and I appreciate your service. I'm watching these pictures here. 36 years is a distinguished career. You have a sound legal mind, you're a great writer, and you're just a good guy, and I really appreciate it. And I'd be amiss to not remind everyone that you are a distinguished University of Kansas School of Law graduate.
How about that?
You should be very proud of. Happy retirement, sir, appreciate you.
There's another fake smile he's doing. Mike, thanks, you know, echo, thank you for being a friend. As we scroll through the pictures, there's, there's purple shirts for K-State games, there's golf pictures, there's a few pictures with a beer in the hands. I just want the public to know that you're a very professional person, you do come to work. So these pictures are not doing justice. I think there's one of actually with your staff and stuff, so anyway. Thanks, com staff, for putting this together, and good luck. Sonya, best, best wishes to you, too. Okay, you're lucky to have him, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to make a point, I did, I made good on my deal this morning, I brought you the cookie. And what's it say, Mr. Papoun? Yeah, but from me to you, you were right and I was wrong. All right, make it very clear, you were right, I was wrong, thank you.
For those in the background, there was years of, I'll bet you a cookie that you're wrong, kind of, kind of statements, and so Commissioner Howe brought a large cookie, so apparently it was a little... Yeah, there was a few times when you were wrong and, and Mike was right. Anyway, okay, anything, Mike, anything, please?
You know, I was a gender review, I didn't remember this coming up.
I was out of town, I didn't know.
Something about open, openness in county government, but I hope Justin didn't see some of those pictures and realize what this job does to you. Certainly ages you, but no, it's been a wonderful pleasure representing you and this particular board, in particular. I did have the pleasure of working with Jim in previous, my previous life, before being county councillor, but all the rest of you are new to the, since I've been county councillor, and it's, it's been a wonderful cap on my career. I didn't realize at the time that I needed it, but it's really been, really been enjoyable. And what I thought was going to be a two or three-month stint ended up being over four and a half years. And I have the commission to thank for that, being so wonderful to work with. Tom has been... with. Tom has been an instrumental part of me being around, working with him and his staff. He does such a wonderful job hiring people and working. Our management people around here are so professional, so wonderful to work with. And they're, they're also people you just want to go after work and have a beer with to, you want to help them. And of course, the elected officials we have besides you, the ones you, like Tanya, Tanya Buckingham's office today, but Kelly Arnold and Randy Bailey, so wonderful to work with. And our office wouldn't, wouldn't be able to effectively represent the county as an entirety if we weren't able to get along with these, these offices. And of course, we have the best sheriff and district attorney that I think I can ever remember having since being at the county for this long. And lastly, my staff, as you guys are all aware, they do all the work. I haven't answered a legal question in, I can't remember how long. So, they do a wonderful job. You made a great decision last week, Mick and Justin. He will, he will continue, continue the office running, hopefully efficiently as it's been running and, or even better. And it's just been, been a wonderful ride and I appreciate, appreciate all of you and thank you very much.
All right. Very good.
With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Nicole. And again, thanks to the comms team for a great start to the meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we had a message that, that we received no emails last night by 5 o'clock deadline. And I understand this morning, nobody had signed up for the public agenda comments. So, we will move on from that, but also let the public know, Tom, I think it's all right to let them know that effective either immediately or soon, we're going to go back to the before COVID pandemic world where the, the 5 o'clock deadline of just emailing in. So, if you want to address the county commission in the future, we're going to go back, like many other things, we've gone back before pandemic and go back to, if you want to address this in the public comment, you come to the, come to this wonderful auditorium and sign up and you can address us in person. And that way, it actually allows for a little more exchange of questions and clarifications. So, we will do that. Obviously, your public is free to still email your commissioner or all commission on various things at various times and whatever, on issues. But, but as far as the formality of what we had been doing, we are bringing that to a close and going back to the, the regular show up and sign up and, and addresses. So, with that, so there's no reason to receive in file. So, Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments, Item A, resolution appointing Valerie Morley to the Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Okay. Mr. Papoun?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun, County Councillor. Items A and B can be taken together. These are two appointments by Commissioner Meitzner to his mental health advisor, to our Cedric County Mental Health Advisory Board. Each of you get three appointments to this board. Commissioner Meitzner is recommending the appointment of Valerie Morley and the appointment of Trevor Lictie to this board. The resolutions are in proper order and ask you approve the resolutions.
Okay. Thank you. And I want to thank staff for helping me evaluate who would be the best replacement for a couple that had resigned. So, I want to congratulate Valerie and Trevor for, for, for being appointed to this. And I'll, well, I'll make a motion that we appoint Valerie Morley and Trevor Lictie to the Mental Health Advisory Board.
A second.
Motion in a second. Any other questions being done? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
And here, I don't see Valerie or...
Okay, they're not here. But they will need to come down and get sworn in, like all of our appointments. Next item, please.
Item C, resolution appointing Catherine Herzog to the Cedric County District One Citizens' Advisory Board.
Okay. Mike Papoun?
Mr. Chairman, this is an appointment to your Citizens Advisory Board. You're recommending the appointment of Catherine Herzog. We have a resolution prepared. It's proper form and ask you approve the resolution.
Okay. And again, that's in the District One Citizens Advisory Board. And Kathy has, Kathy Herzog has had a long history in our community of active service in a variety of ways and a lot of political support for many, many persons and causes. And so, with that, I make a motion that, proudly make a motion that we approve Kathy Herzog as the Citizens One Advisory Board appointee.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions being done? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Kathy, you are now official. Wait, you got to get sworn in.
Soon to be sworn in. Good morning, Commissioners. And Mr. Papoun, I wore this one for you. All right, please raise your right hand. And I do solemnly swear that I would support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County First District Citizens Advisory Board. So, help me God. Just say I do.
I do.
There you go.
Congratulations, Kathy. Want to say anything?
Thank you very much. I look forward to serving on this advisory board. And I also want to thank you very much for your service. It's appreciated for all of us, by all of us who live in this area. So, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Peter Cook to the Cedric County Third District Citizens' Advisory Board, student position.
Okay. Again, Mr. Papoun?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is an appointment by Commissioner Dennis to add a student position to his Citizens Advisory Board. He is recommending that we appoint Peter Cook. We have prepared a resolution of the same and ask you approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Each year, I always appoint a senior to my Citizens Advisory Board. And that way, they serve for one year and they go on to bigger and better things. But they learn a lot about county government during that year. And so, if you remember last meeting, my, my previous appointee, she's on her way to K-State, by the way, to, to go to college. And so, I had an opening and I talked to Peter Cook and I've known his parents for some time. And he has volunteered to serve on my Citizens Advisory Board for the next year. The student position is equal to every other position on my board. They, they ask questions, they vote, they do everything just as every other member of my board. But I always think it's a good idea to have a student's perspective as we have the meeting. So, I'm very proud to nominate Peter Cook to my Citizens Advisory Board. I make that motion.
A second. Any questions, comments being done? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And I don't see Peter Cook here. Okay, all right. Next item, please.
Item E, resolutions appointing 12 members to the Cedric County Fourth District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Again, Mr. Papoun?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun, County Councillor. As you are aware, when we draft resolutions creating Citizens Advisory Boards, once a commissioner leaves office and a new commissioner comes onboard, they, the former appointees' terms expire and that new commissioner gets to appoint his own Citizens Advisory Board, his or her own. And in this case, we have Commissioner Beatty with his 12 selections to his Citizens Advisory Board. And I'll read off all of the 12 members that he's recommending for appointment. He's recommending Zach Day, Allison Despard, Donald Gearing Jr., Suzanne Haynes, Krista Johnson, Jacob Lemunyan, Kater Newton, Ariel Rodriguez, Helen Rolfe, Chris Dingo, Jordan Walker, and Andrew Womack. We have prepared resolutions, appoint each of these individuals to his Citizens Advisory Board and ask that you approve the resolutions.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Papoun. We've worked hard the last few months to really try to build an entire cab that was representative of our district. And I think we've done a really good job here and I'm excited for these individuals to join and have a seat at the table to help shape the conversation on many of the biggest issues we're facing here in Cedric County. So, we, they will be sworn in at our first official cab meeting. So, for this morning, I'd like to make a motion appointing the 12 aforementioned members to the Cedric County Fourth District Citizen Advisory Board.
Second that. Any other questions, comments being done? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And my compliments, Commissioner Beatty, for coordinating that and getting that done. I know it's, it's not an easy task and you have to work through it. But you did a nice job. Okay, next item, please.
New business, Item F, Cedric County Development, Developmental Disability Organization Update.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Tim Kaufman.
Good morning, Mr. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. Thank you for this opportunity to update you and the community on some work that I've done around management of the Developmental Disability Organization. And at the county, not as long as Mike, but for a while. And this is the first time that I have had a second vacancy for a department head. So, in 2012, the CDDO Director position became vacant through a promotional opportunity. And again, in 2022, Deen Iswanger had the opportunity to become the Regional Director for DCF. And I think that's a great move for her and it's, I think, a reflection on the county, how we develop leaders. And she served us very well, but had the same decision to make for the second time. And what was most important to me was that we continued to be able to deliver quality services paired with organizational efficiency and effectiveness. And one of the biggest factors in 2012 was the pending implementation of CAN Care or Managed Care for Medicaid Services in the state of Kansas. There were so many unknowns at that point in time that after a lot of consideration, consultation with the county manager, decided at that point in time to refill that position. I've come to a different decision this time. So, I wanted to talk to you about how I got to that point and again, let the community know as well where we're headed. Process that I always follow when I've got a vacancy like this is to review the existing job description, look at the organizational structure, the staffing available, and then the process and service needs that are in place. And in this instance, I also engaged a number of stakeholders, including the advisory boards that are impacted, service provider networks, Interhab, which is the state association for the Developmental Disability Organizations. And then, we also conducted a community survey as well. I also chartered a cross-functional work group of staff from both the CDDO and the Department on Aging, asked them to look at consolidation feasibility and any implementation issues that they may identify. And with all of those accumulated data points, I was able to come to the decision that now was the right time to consolidate the CDDO and the Department on Aging into a new Department of Aging and Disabilities effective July 1st. Some of the things that I learned as I had these conversations and met with all the different stakeholders that I did was that I think the decision in 2012 was the right one at, for that time. The network has responded very, very well to the implementation of CAN Care. It took a few years to get that working smoothly, but it does work smoothly now. It also gave the CDDO time to grow and mature. It's a relatively small department, but they led the way in terms of adopting trauma-informed care approach to their service delivery model. And they've fully embraced Kansas Leadership Center's leadership principles. That has created a strong management team at the CDDO and a really effective workforce there as well. And then, there's also a number of similarities and overlap of services and systems that both departments interact with. They both contract with the same state agency. And so, it makes sense for a lot of different reasons to bring those two departments together. This model is used elsewhere across the country and in at least one other community here in Kansas. This consolidated approach also fits within the model used by the Department on Aging as an umbrella organization over a number of org units, including physical disabilities, transportation, the Aging and Disability Resource Center, Old Americans Act programming, Mill Levee programming, funded programming. So, the CDDO will become another component, independent. We'll still have a separate contract with the state of Kansas for those unique services, a separate funding stream. But there are some opportunities, again, that will be created in terms of efficiency, particularly related to growth that the Department on Aging has seen over the last few years. Locally, CDDOs were envisioned and created by the legislature in the 1990s. At that point in time, there was a community preference that our CDDO, the CDDO that served Cedric County, not be attached to a service provider organization. In a number of communities across the state, there are what they call CSPs, a Community Service Provider, that also functions as a CDDO. And there were concerns in our community that there would be, oh, maybe an advantage in terms of referrals and that sort of thing, coming from a CDDO that was attached to a customer service or a Community Service Provider organization. So, the community asked the county to step up and take the role of the CDDO, be that front door for the organization and provide that oversight. The original CDDO was an org unit within the comm care department. There were enough differences between those two systems and the populations that they serve and the models that they use in terms of service delivery that they were then separated out shortly thereafter. I'd like to take credit for this consolidation idea as my own, but it is not. It's happening, it has happened federally. Back in 2012, you can see the federal agencies that were combined to create the Administration for Community Living. And at the state, state level, the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services was also combined in 2012, bringing together the Department on Aging and some components of the former Department of Social Rehabilitation Services. There are assets and opportunities as we take this path. One of them is that we have highly qualified and committed staff working in both organizations, very committed to the populations that they serve. I also need to point out how strong the management team at the CDDO is. Sherry Arbuckle, Shelley Harrington, and Jeanette Livingston form the core of the management team at the CDDO, been invaluable to me over this ti, this past year or so. They really know what they're doing. They're very good at what they do. And they were a great deal of help to me and I think they'll continue to support Annette as we go forward as well. There's a culture of innovation and leadership within both departments that will continue to, to serve them both well. And then, we've got Annette Graham, who is locally, statewide, and nationally recognized for her leadership in terms of aging and disability service. She already serves a number, part of the disability population in terms of physical disability population. So, she has connections with state agencies that are important and she's got connections with legislators as well. So, she's well positioned to take on this additional task. And it also gives us a chance to address some of the growth and reduce supervisory span of control. There are also some risks and we've identified some mitigation factors that go along with those risks. I think the biggest one that I identified as I talked to all the different stakeholders was discomfort with change. People just don't like, they get comfortable and they don't like change. And one of the things that we have that will help address that is that we've got a, a strong leadership mindset. Annette and the remaining management team at Aging and the Aging, or in the CDDO management team, very strong. And they're skilled in working through change. Both of those fields have seen significant changes over the last few years and they're very adept at handling that change. Another thing that was a concern related to the CDDO was a loss of identity. I think the umbrella approach that the Department on Aging has implemented in the past will make sure that the CDDO does not lose their identity. They, they'll continue to be a contracting entity with the state. They'll contract with providers in the community as they have in the past. So, they will continue to be a strong leader in the role of Developmental Disabilities. There was concern that this would add an additional layer of management that does not change. Annette reported to me, Dee reported to me, that will still be the same through Annette. And there was concern, some concern about reduced access to leadership, particularly the manager and I and others in finance and HR and that sort of thing. That's not going to change either. They'll continue to, those folks will report to Annette. They'll have access to me and others as well. And then, both the CDDO and Aging are known as leaders, particularly around innovation. And there was some concern that the CDDO would not be able to continue to implement new practices and programs. But Annette has demonstrated year after year, her department continues to receive national recognition for programs they implement. So, I don't think there's going to be any drop off in terms of innovation for either of these service systems. for either of these service systems. The next steps are some technical cleanup by finance and HR. We're going to do a little bit of position management. We will do some funding change for a few positions that are involved. And then it's, this is the first step in that stakeholder notification and engagement. So I would like to again introduce the Department on Aging and Disabilities. Happy to answer any questions for you. And Annette is here as well if there are questions for her. But the appropriate action would be to receive and file, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tim. I appreciate the update. I've been asking for a while what's going to happen with CDDO. And I think you've made the right decision. I fully support it. I think Annette's a fantastic leader over in Aging. She'll do a great job with taking on the staff from CDDO. I also don't want to lose our emphasis on our legislative agenda to reduce the waiting list for people that need services from CDDO. That's been something that I've made sure that was on our legislative agenda each year, and I'm going to continue to push forward with that because waiting nine years to get services or 10 years, however long it's taking people to get services is unacceptable. I also think right now is a great time to go back and take a look at our Aging Advisory Board because you've got a new mission and it needs to incorporate both portions of that mission. And I would like Tom Schultz and staff to take a look at our Aging Advisory Board and see what we need to change as far as the focus of that board and the composition. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Okay. Tim, thank you. I know that sometimes when change and merging or evaluation happens, the fact that this wasn't done just on an instant and a, you know, just jumped to a thought. You've done a tremendous amount of research and evaluation, and that brings at least me comfort that this looks like a really, really nice move for you. And again, it's not anything we vote on other than to receive and file your organization. So thank you and Annette, Tom, the organization for evaluating and coming to this conclusion. Commissioner Howe?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the update. I'd just like to ask, have both advisory boards been involved in the discussion?
Yes.
To get us to this point?
Yes.
They have been. Is this consolidation a final basically informing us, or is this something that's just in process of beginning? Or where are we at in the process of actually making this change?
We are nearing the finish line. I'm going to turn things over to Annette in about a week. And we've got, continued work with HR. There's a couple of, as I mentioned, some position management work to be done and a little bit of some financial budget transfer, that sort of thing. But we are at the conclusion. We're ready to unleash this new department on the world.
So on the CDDO side, those providers in the community like Starkey or the ARC or whoever, have they, have they been asked for their support as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. They were involved in all of those early conversations, the stakeholders that I mentioned. On the CDDO side, we've got two significant stakeholder populations. One are individuals served and their guardians, and then the other is the provider network because the CDDO isn't a direct provider of services. And so absolutely, we've engaged those entities, all of the different organizations that we contract with for services.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to receive and file this nice report.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Motion. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Beatty. Madam Clerk, being no other comments, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Right. Next item, please.
Item G, consideration of a grant in the amount of $1,625,110 from the Kansas Governor's Grant Program for Local Safety and Security Equipment Grant Program.
Good morning, Laura.
Good morning. Hey, Laura Forshee, Director of Emergency Communications. We are seeking a grant through that Kansas Governor's Grant Program to cover the cost of encryption on radios. To give you some background, in this request for this grant, we were provided some information earlier this year that there was going to be an encryption requirement for any radio transmission that provides or transmits criminal justice information that is obtained through the KBI, which is where we get, if we run somebody's driver's license, a warrant check, anything like that, we run it through their system. So we had been made aware of this, that this was in discussion, and then found out that it was no longer in discussion, yet part of the policy for the KBI passed down from the FBI as a mandatory requirement for these radio transmissions. In finding out this information, of course, we wanted to move quickly and figuring out a plan to bring this into Sedgwick County so that we were in compliance with this standard. It is a current standard as published in the guidebook of December 2022, but there is some grace period in this, and it will be audited when we have our audit in 2024. So we have some time to come into compliance, but obviously, not having had forethought or information ahead of this, everybody's scrambling to find funding to make sure that we meet these encryption requirements enter the grant program. So on behalf of all of the agencies we serve that would be subject to this, Emergency Communications is seeking this grant to make sure that we can encrypt these radio channels and be in compliance with that standard. We have 23 departments, mostly law enforcement, but also non-law enforcement includes emergency management, 911 my staff, and the Sedgwick County Fire Department for their fire investigators. And they are, we are all coming together as a group and putting in for this grant under the umbrella of Emergency Communications. There is a 10% match to the grant that each agency and each department has provided a letter of support saying that they are going to match that 10% requirement, so that is not on the onus of Sedgwick County to do so. The entire grant request is a little over $1.6 million. Of that, for just Sedgwick County radios, the 10% match is going to be around $46,000. The grant, again, we're not sure that we're going to get it. If we don't, we'll have to pivot and find other ways to do this, but we're certainly hoping for at least a portion of that money. And I'm hoping for your support in seeking this grant. If you have any questions?
Thank you for explaining that, and very important, I think, for the community. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no problem with the grant whatsoever. I just want to, because we have Julie Stimson in the audience and Laura here, I think it's a perfect time to bring up something that Julie brought up yesterday, and that was the problem with people calling 911 when there's not an emergency because of a tornado or some bad weather. There was a nice article played last night on Channel 12 where they actually played some of the audio that came in, where the people were asking why the sirens were going off and so forth, or tying up our 911. And the first thing that you hear on those audio tapes is one of our 911 operators saying, 911, what's your emergency? And then there's no emergency. So they've tied that up for the people need to call in with an emergency. So I hope other people pick that up. I know that people don't watch our different staff meetings as much as they do this meeting, so that's the reason I brought it up in this meeting, is to make sure that the public is aware that 911 is for emergencies. So again, I'm going to vote for this grant, but since I have two of you in the room, I thought I'd better take an opportunity to say how important it is that we use 911 properly. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I don't see any, so I will make a motion to approve the submission of the grant application, authorize all the actions as described in the motion. So is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other question? Don't see any, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Laura, and tell your staff thanks for all they do. Okay. Next item, please.
Item H, consideration of a grant in the amount of $9,774,675 from the Department of Defense for Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program.
Julie, good morning. And I didn't know that we would this fast get to this item.
Yes.
So thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Yes, I am here to ask for the approval of submission of the grant proposal. We've had several meetings and discussions about this project, so I won't get too much into the details, but certainly will stand for questions as we move along. Just a kind of a background, the Emergency Preparedness Center, what we're calling EPC, will be constructed to maintain a steady reserve of emergency response supplies, provide for convenient access to public health services such as vaccination, and provide a hardened EOC, Emergency Operations Center, to support response to disasters throughout the community. We had submitted for this grant in 2022 and was not selected to submit an application, but staff attended a debriefing, provided suggestions for improvements, and that is how we are here today. We've implemented a lot of those improvements and recommendations. So we are here to request the, let me flip this over. For the application for the grant, for the $9,774,675 for the Department of Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program, the cash match is $4,189,146 with our CIP funding, which we just recently did the amendment to, for $783,800 for total sources of $14,747,621. Just kind of a recap of what this project actually is. We just purchased the land, Meridian and MacArthur for the location for this. This is a multipurpose building that will benefit a lot of departments, including McConnell Air Force Base partnerships for some of their processes and joint trainings in emergency response. It is meant to be the Emergency Operations Center. We're also going to be including the Public Health Emergency Preparedness activity in there, which includes any kind of mass vaccination, mass prophylaxis. Also, like I mentioned, the Emergency Operations Center. And just overall, it can be used for training off, when it's not being activated, it can be used for training. So this is a very large, multipurpose building that we're requesting this grant funding for. There's been a lot of work put into it, a lot of folks collaborating behind the scenes to put this application together. The application deadline is this Friday, and the piece of this is requesting your approval to submit the application for this grant.
Okay. Thank you for the summary presentation. Any questions or comments on this? This is a very important thing for our community if we can win this grant.
Yes. This would be a game changer for a lot of folks and for our entire community. It really would be.
Yes, it would. So it's highly important. And so with that, I will make a motion that we approve the submission of the grant and authorize the actions as described in the in the agenda item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, Julie.
All right.
Just go win it. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item I, Presentation of the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Okay. I know we have Hope getting ready to present, but first of all, Lindsey, approach and...
Thank you for remembering, Chairman. Yes, Lindsey Poursou, your CFO. I'm actually hijacking this agenda item for just a minute. And that is because I want to deliver some good news. And I want Hope and her team, who are being typical finance people, sitting in the back corner, to announce that they actually received the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 2021 audit that was completed and presented last year. It typically takes a while for these to work through the process, and if you'll bear with me, I'm actually going to read just a bit from the news release because I think it helps to articulate why this is actually such a big deal. So the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to County of Sedgwick for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2021. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So we kind of joke around about, we have a long history. Some of these reports are older, well, both of the reports that Hope's team receives awards for are actually older than her in terms of the county's cumulative consecutive awards. But this is a tremendous testament to this team and the hard work that they put in and the long hours. Also, last week, you all know, we received reaffirmation of a AAA credit rating from Moody's. You're about to hear the audit. All of these are objective indications to you and about you and your management. They all are great news stories for today. And so I just wanted to take a moment and actually ask for a round of applause for our fantastic finance team. With that, I'll let Hope get down to business.
Good morning, Hope. Welcome to the meeting and congratulations.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Hope Hernandez, your accounting director. Before I present the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, I'm going to let Michael Gerber, who is from Forvis, who's our external auditing firm, he is going to brief you on the 2022 audit results.
Okay. Morning, Mike. I think all the commissioners have a copy of the report that you've provided in the past, so.
Appreciate it, Chairman.
Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you very much. Michael Gerber, with Forvis, we do complete your audit of the financial statements. If I could, I'd just like to echo Lindsey's comments with your finance team. Want to thank them for a job well done. Historically, they've always gotten us what we need in a very timely fashion to do our job. This year was no exception. Lindsey, kind of called him out, me in the back corner. I was also there as well, so it's not like I can really call him out too much, but thank you very much for your help in getting through this report. It looks like you all have a copy in front of you. I just want to, again, have just a few brief comments before Hope gets into more, some of the trends and some of the more interesting numbers. But some of the areas that you might be interested in as you go through this report, within the financial section tab, immediately following that is three pages worth of narrative, which is our independent auditor's report. That's a clean opinion, unmodified. That's the opinion that you want as a result of an audit, so good news there. Immediately following that, on page A4, is the Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is a good section to look through, about 11 pages long of just, if you want some trends or just to kind of see what changes happened between the two years, this is going to be the place to be. That's probably the main focus that you want to look at if you're just interested in changes year over year. The very end of this report is the single audit section. This area summarizes, it's about three pages worth of federal funds that you received for the past year. And with those federal funds, there are certain requirements, certain compliance requirements that you have to watch out for. And we actually tested five different programs within that population there. The good news is we had no findings as a result of any of those, testing any of those programs. So again, another good news area to be happy about there. The final thing that I want to mention, it's a separate document than the annual report, but you also have a management letter in front of you. Each year, we do a number of walkthroughs, cash inflows, outflows, making sure your processes are working well. Based on our testing, if we have any what we would call material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, things to improve on, we would write those within that letter. There were no written comments this year. So again, I think that speaks volume to not only you, but your finance team, correcting any issues that are found throughout the years. It's a very clean letter this year. So with that, that covers the comments that I had. I'll probably turn it back over to Hope to go through a more in-depth analysis here.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks for not only the report, but kind of explaining to us. It's always good when it's a good report. Thank you. Hope, back to you.
All right. So I know that it's now six months into the new fiscal year 2023, and a lot has changed, but the 2022 financials will show you that we were in, we were and are in a good financial position. Sedgwick County is required by state law, as well as by various bond covenants, to produce financial statements annually within 180 days of the end of the fiscal year. The financials are published in the form of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, most commonly referred to as the ACFR. We are required to have the annual financial statements audited by an independent CPA firm through the RFP process. The audit was conducted by Forvis. As Michael mentioned earlier, the financial audit is complete, and the county was issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, which is the highest grade you can achieve. The Division of Finance has published the 2022 ACFR, and that document has been delivered to you. The ACFR provides a complete and accurate disclosure of the results of the county's financial activity for the 2022 fiscal year, which ended on December 31st. The financial report, and more importantly, the day-to-day accounting activity that was required to produce this over 193-page document, was produced by my required to produce this over 193-page document, was produced by my accounting staff, as was mentioned earlier. I want to take this opportunity again to recognize the individuals from the accounting team who are here today, Cassandra Mestes, Michelle Strout, David Floyd, and the rest of the accounting team who put together this book. So thank you very much for all of your hard work. The county accounts for its financial activity in two different ways. We are required to primarily answer questions about our near-term financing capabilities. What does this mean? Well, in the private sector, the primary interest of that entity is to know whether or not they made a profit and what their overall financial position is. That is the long-term view of the finances of the entity. As you are aware, in the public sector, we are not here to make a profit. We are here to deliver services to the community that can't be delivered by private entities to our community, and in order to provide those services, we have to have the ability to fund those services. There are three perspectives for analysis. The first one is near-term financing, which produces the traditional fund statements. So instead of consolidating all of our accounts and records into one, we maintain separate sets of books for dedicated funding streams and for specific activities that we need to keep segregated. An example of these statements are on pages A19 through A31, which consists of statements such as the balance sheet that are broken out by funds. The second is financial position. This is the traditional way that businesses report their financial information. For the traditional statements, we produce what is called an entity-wide statement that establishes our financial position, and that is on page A19. Just like a private corporation rolls up all of its various activities of its divisions into a single set of financial statements, we are rolling all of the activities of all of the funds to produce a single set of financial statements for Sedgwick County. An example of this is the first two statements on page A16 and A17 and A18. These are the Statement of Net Position and the Statement of Activities. Again, these are rolling all of the funds for all of the departments, all of the divisions and everything into one record, so we can see what our overall position is. And third is Long-Term Trends. These are shown in the Statistical Section of the Audit Report. We do comparisons on one, five, and 10 years. There are two basis of accounting measures that we used in this audit report. The first one is the traditional statements. They use the Modified Accrual Approach, which is the combination of the cash basis and the full accrual accounting method for revenue recognition. And the second, for the entity-wide statements, we use the Full Accrual Approach. So before we jump into the data on the next slide, I just wanted to mention that on the top of each slide is the page number referenced back in the ACFR later, if you want to see, if you have additional questions or want to see where the information's coming from.
Thank you. Good reference.
I will begin with the traditional fund statements, and for the traditional statements, we start with the fund balance. Fund balance is the amount of net assets that we have on hand within our accumulated governmental funds at the end of the year. This chart shows five years of history, so you can get a sense of what changes have occurred over the last five years. The chart is divided into different colors, and each chart represents a different fund or fund type for all of the governmental activities. The dark blue line, the dark blue segment at the bottom is the county's general fund, which is the largest single area and where most of our governmental activities take place. The government, the general fund ended 2022 with a fund balance of $83.2 million, and this chart shows over the last five years, the general fund balance has ranged from $66.9 million to $83.2 million. Above that, you will see a brown segment, which represents the Fed and State Assistance Funds, which are also referred to as grant funds, that have an ending balance of $31.7 million. The balance has ranged from $23.1 to $31.7 million. Next, you'll see the gray segment, which represents all other funds. This is a combination of the fund balances of the Fire District, the Special Revenue Funds, and the Capital Project Funds. The fund balance for all of these funds for 2022 was $82.5 million, and this section ranges from $46 million to $82.5 million in the last five years. The thin blue line represents what we call the Debt Service Fund, which ended the year with $2.2 million. The orange segment represents the Debt Proceeds Funds, and this has a balance of $7.6 million. These are funds that account for bond proceeds from the sale of debt that we haven't yet used either to pay for the projects or to refund the debt for the bonds that were sold. So we have a lot of particular rules with this one where you can only use it to pay back those debts. At the top of the chart, you're going to see the PBC Fund. This is represented by the thin green line, which had an ending balance of $42 million. And this is primarily money collected by the PBC to pay for a building on Wichita State University's Innovation Campus. And the bonds that the PBC sold to pay for that building will be repaid solely with proceeds from the Wichita State University mill levy that we impose. So you'll see a large increase here on this chart, and this was due to the new standard that we had to implement this year. It's called GASB 87. It was a lease standard. It only affected about seven leases, but the biggest one was this one, where we had to go and restate the beginning fund balance for 2022, which again, affected the 2021 ending balance and made that go to $42.9 million. And it's just reflecting those liabilities on our books. So that's why you'll see the increase here.
All right. Hope, can you just, this is an important slide, and I just didn't know if any commissioners had any questions on this as of now? Okay. Don't see any. But fund balance is always something in our conversation, and so thank you for the explanation. Please proceed.
Okay. So now, we're going to look at the general fund, and this chart identifies five years of the general fund fund balances. And then it identifies the classifications of the fund balances also within that graph. The dark blue section at the bottom of the chart represents the non-spendable fund balance. These are net assets that are related to things like inventory, receivables, and other things that cannot be readily spent, and that balance was $7.8 million. I'm sorry, I'm reading from 2018. That balance was $5.6 million. The brown bar represents the assigned fund balance. And every year, we adopt a budget, and we budget for a large amount of contingencies to fund major events or crises that we have to spend legal authority, that we need to spend funds on, so we have to provide legal spending authority. So those are in the assigned fund balance, and that is $10.3 million. When we do that, we are assigning that fund balance, we are designating a use for it in the subsequent years, and you'll see the designated fund balance again for that is $10.3, $10.3 million in 2022. The yellow segment at the top of the chart is unassigned fund balance. That's the amount of the general fund fund balance for which there has been no preset designated use. The sum of the unassigned fund balance and the assigned fund balance, which is the $59.3 and the $10.3 million at the end of 2022, equals what we call in accounting the unrestricted fund balance. The county has a fund balance policy that states that the unrestricted general fund fund balance should never be less than 20% of budgeted expenditures and transfers in the general fund. What you can see on this slide is a demonstration of our compliance with this policy limitation. We ended the year with $75.2 million of unrestricted fund balance. Budgeted expenditures were $268.6 million. The 20% threshold is $53.7 million, so we were over the 20% threshold by $21.4 million or 28%. Now we'll look at the near-term financing indicators of financial condition within the traditional fund statements. One of the key questions that we want to be able to answer has to do with the budgetary solvency of our governmental funds. And the first question is, are the county's annual revenues sufficient to pay for their annual budget? What you see on this chart shows 10 years of history, and for each year, it identifies the percentage that revenues made of expenditures. What we want to see ideally is for the data points to be right at or slightly above the 100% mark. What we see on this chart is that we have been consistently below the 100% line. In 2022, our governmental fund revenues amounted to 98% of our governmental fund expenditures. To get a more reasonable picture of whether or not we are able to pay for our own operations, we use the Operating Solvency Indicator, which takes the same revenue base and compares it to the governmental fund expenditures, but it excludes PBC, debt service, and debt proceed funds. This is a measure of our operating solvency as opposed to our budgetary solvency measure. Again, we would like to be at or above the 100% mark, and in 2022, we ended the year with revenues at about 101.9% of expenditures. Another question that we want to answer has to do with the flexibility of our county finances. To what extent do we have full control over the use of our resources? And in order to answer that question, we need to look at the Total Debt Service, which is the total principal and interest obligations that the county has incurred as a percentage of all the expenditures that we occur. To the extent that we have debt service expenditures that take priority over everything else because we have contractual obligations that we must fulfill for those. So to the extent that we have those expenditures, they're going to consume the available resources that we have on hand. At the end of the year, our debt service expenditures amounted to 3.9% of all government fund expenditures. You see on this chart, we have consistently been between 3% and 6%, except for the years between 2013 and 2014. That's when our debt service expenditure spiked because we were engaging in a series of refundings, paying off bonds early during those years. The next question we want to ask is whether or not the county has any difficulty paying its short-term obligations, and this is a measure of liquidity. This measure looks at the total cash and investments that the county has on hand at the end of the year as a percentage of its liabilities. What this chart shows is that at the end of 2022, our cash on hand amounted to $3.54 for every $1 of liability. So this is the final measure of our near-term financing. How much are we relying on other areas of government to fund our activities? What is the total intergovernmental revenue as a percentage of our total revenue? And what we have seen over the past 10 years is that intergovernmental revenue has consistently been between 14% and 16%, except for the years of 2020 and 2021, and that's due to the COVID relief funding that we received in those years. So that's why you'll see the spike there. This chart shows that in 2022, we did drop back down to 16.9%. Now we will dive into the entity-wide financial statements. The entity-wide statements are the statements that wrap all of the county's financial activity into a single set of financial statements on a full accrual basis, similar to what private businesses do. I will begin with the county's net position or what the county's net worth is. The county had a net position at the end of 2022 of $408.6 million. Each bar represents a separate year, and five years are represented on this chart. Within each bar, you can see the composition of our net position. The dark blue segment identifies capital assets, net of any debt that was outstanding to pay for those assets. The 2022 total is $350.3 million. The lighter blue segment represents restricted net position, and the nature of the restrictions is illustrated on the pie chart on the right. There are eight identified restricted funds listed, and the largest being capital improvements at $25.4 million. The county's total restricted net position at the end of 2022 was $67.4 million, which is $5.4 million more than the previous year. The significant reduction is in the restricted funds from 2017 to 2018 is due to the refunding again of the 2008 PPZ bonds for approximately $26 million. Finally, the light blue segment at the bottom represents our unrestricted net position. So what we want to know with financial position, perhaps the most important question is, did it improve or did it deteriorate? What this chart shows is that our financial position improved by just over a half of a percent, which is a good indicator for our financial position going into 2023. In the Statement of Activities, our beginning net position was $544 million, and our ending position was $546 million. Our financial position improved because our revenues exceeded our expenses by about $2 million. One of the things that we're always concerned with is the extent to which the various activities of the county are able to support themselves with their own self-generated revenue. We are not in the profit-making business, so we don't expect them to be fully self-supporting, but to the extent that they can generate their own revenues, it means that we don't have to provide tax support dollars in order to pay for all of those activities. So what this chart shows are the various activities of the government and the functions of government that are represented by a bar, and within that bar, the total is the amount of expenses that we had for the year. The dark blue area is the amount of program revenue or self-generated revenue that the activity produced to pay its bills, and the light blue area is the amount of general revenue or tax support revenue that was necessary in order to pay for the bills for that activity. What this chart shows is that the largest single activity of Sedgwick County in terms of expense is public safety. During 2022, we spent $169.3 million on public safety activities. Public safety was able to produce about $36.5 million of program revenue through jail fees and various grants to cover those bills, but the balance of $132.8 million was required to be provided by taxes levied on Sedgwick County residents. So 78.5% of public safety activities were funded by property taxes. General government incurred $81.5 million in expenses, and the general government required about 51.5% of tax support, and that's also where our COVID funding is. Health and welfare activities, which includes Calm Care, the Health Department, CDDO, and Aging Services, incurred $65 million in expenses and required 18% tax support. Of that $65 million, about $53 million was paid for with program income generated by those activities, fees that are imposed on clients of the Human Services Department, and grant revenues that are collected to provide services to clients of the Human Services There are different measures that can be looked at to determine the adequacy of financial position of the entity-wide statements. What I'm going to focus on here is the solvency measure, which looks at the county's ability to pay off its long-term debt with its assets. What we're doing is taking long-term liabilities as a percentage of assets, and what we see is that at 2022, we ended the year with long-term liabilities equal to about 33% of assets. In other words, 33 cents of every liability was covered by a dollar of assets, which indicates that the county is in good condition to pay off its long-term debt. And just to note that the 2014 increase from what traditionally had been around the 20% threshold was due to that debt refinancing that we were undertaking at that time that I spoke about earlier. And the 2015 spike up to about the 35% threshold is due to another GASB standard that we had with the caper's liability that we had to reflect on our books. But even with that liability, what this chart illustrates is that we have the ample ability to be able to repay our debts. The last tab in the audit report is the Statistics Section, and this section contains a lot of good information for anyone who's interested in evaluating Sedgwick County's finances. So I'll spend some time showing some of the indicators and trends that can be identified by looking at these statistics. First, we'll look at the 10-year history of governmental revenues and expenses with federal COVID funding included in the numbers. On this chart, the dark blue line represents revenue, and the lighter blue line represents expense. What you want to see is the dark blue line above the light blue line, indicating that we had more revenues than we did expenses. In 2022, that is the case, as revenues are $381.2 million and expenses are $379.3 million. Now we'll look at that same 10-year history, but we will exclude the COVID relief funding. And again, on this chart, you want to see that the dark blue line, that the light blue line is above the dark blue line. And in 2022, that is the case, as revenues are $356 million and expenses are $329 million. The chart shows that neither have grown very much during the period of time and that expenses are decreasing yearly.
Hope, one moment.
Yes.
I think you said that backwards.
I did say that backwards.
The expense-revenue on this slide, just to make sure if anybody's following.
Yes, I did. Sorry about that. Yeah, the revenue, yeah, the revenues are at 329 and the expenses are at 356. Sorry about that. Thanks for the catch.
Right. Mr. Howell caught it for me.
Thank you. We can also determine where the county has been placing its emphasis over the past 10 years by looking at the change of expenses over that 10-year period by function. And what this chart shows is the amount of increase or decrease of expenses in 2022 versus 2013, including federal COVID funding. The greatest source of increases for county expenses over that 10-year period has been general government at $34.79 million. $23.3 million of those expenses are directly related to federal COVID funding. Public safety expenses increased $32.35 million. Health and welfare experienced an $8.44 million increase. Culture and Rec expenses increased-- Culture and Rec expenses increased $3.26 million. Public Works decreased by $2.2 million, and Interest had a $2.87 million decrease. And Community Development had a $2.68 million increase in expenses as well. We can also determine where the county has been placing its emphasis over the past 10 years by looking at the change of expenses over that 10-year period by function, and what this chart shows is the amount of increase or decrease of expenses in 2022 versus 2013, again, but here we're excluding the COVID relief funding. And the areas that were affected were general government, because that's where we keep the funding, and it increased $23.34 million. Within our revenues, I've talked before about the expectations that activities generate program revenue as much as possible to pay for their own way so that we don't have to add additional general taxes on the citizens, and what this chart shows is 10 years of history of property tax revenue represented by the light blue line and program revenue represented by the dark blue line. Property Tax Revenue was nearly $54 million higher at $198.5 million versus 40 in 2013. Over the 10-year period, Program Revenue decreased 2012 to 2013, and there were decreases in Program Revenue pretty consistently, and during that period of time, Property Taxes stayed relatively consistent. As a result, at the end of the 10-year period in 2022, Property Taxes are now substantially higher than Program Revenue, again, the $194.22 million versus $176.11 million. What this chart shows is that over the past 10 years, the county has becoming increasingly reliant on Property Taxes as the principal funding stream to pay for county services. Because we're still relying on Property Taxes, we pay a lot of attention to the collection rate. How effective are we at collecting the Property Taxes that have been levied? This chart shows 10 years of history for collection rates. This chart shows the tax year that is funding the budget year, so for example, 2021's taxes are funding the 2022 budget. The most important thing to emphasize here is the county's collection rate, which is controlled principally by the activities of the county treasurer. At its very worst, over this 10-year period in 2012, the county collected 96.8% of all of its taxes that had been levied. In other words, unpaid taxes represented less than 3% of the total levy. The tax year ended with a collection rate of about 98.2%, the second-highest collection rate that we have on record. This indicates the treasurer has been doing a very good job of collecting Property Tax, which is important to us because, again, it's our primary source of funding for our county government. We will now talk about long-term debt. What you see on this chart is 10 years of history for the county's outstanding debt, each year represented by a bar, and within each year, there are different colors representing different categories of debt. In 2022, the county had $38.1 million of general obligation debt. It's the blue section at the bottom of the chart. We had $2.2 million of special assessment debt, and that's the thin dark blue line. We had $69.3 million of PBC debt. We had a very slight amount of about $2.8 million of what we now call finance purchase debt. It used to be called capital leases, but with the new Gatsby standard, we had to change that, so it's called finance purchase debt. And that's the brown at the very top of the chart. So what this chart shows is that the general obligation debt of the county has decreased steadily since its peak in 2014. So now it is down to $69.3 million. PBC debt spiked in 2014, again, due to the refunding that we did in that year. So this is the statistics section that has charts that show 10 years of data about county performance, and this is what citizens are most interested in. What did they get for their money? So here, we're going to talk about Public Safety Service. In 2022, the average number of 911 calls per month was 42,082, which is a 6% decrease from last year and a 4% increase over 10 years. The average number of EMS responses per month is 5,639, which is a 3% decrease from last year and a 17% increase from the previous year. The average daily juvenile population in detention is 45, and that's a 5% increase from last year, but an 18% decrease over 10 years. The average daily population and share of custody is 1,442, which is a 1% change from last year, but a 2% change from 10 years ago. And the number of Public Safety employees is 1,265, which is a 4% decrease from the prior year and a 12% decrease from 10 years ago. Now we'll look at Fire Service. The Fire Service numbers increased significantly this year. So in 2022, the residential structural structure fires was 202, and this is a 124% increase from last year, and then a 189% increase from 10 years ago. So the Fire Department was doing a lot of work in 2022. The average number of medical responses per month was 407, and that's a 17% increase from the year prior and an 8% increase from 10 years ago. And the number of fire stations has stayed the same with nine. In the Health and Welfare Services, the number of mental health clients seen in 2022 was 10,820. It's a 7% decrease from the prior year and a 12% decrease from 10 years ago. The number of eligible people for developmental disability services in 2022 was 2,649. That's a .2% decrease from last year and a 7% increase from 10 years ago. And then the number of Health and Welfare Employees is 577, which is an 11% increase from last year and a 13% increase over 10 years. For Public Health Services, the number of Health Department patients encounters that are not COVID-related in 2022 was 112,515. That's a 16% increase from last year and a 38% decrease from 10 years prior. The number of Health Department patient encounters that is COVID-related is 94,722, which is a 46% decrease from the year prior. And the number of immunizations provided in 2022 that are not COVID-related was 11,170, which is a 28% decrease from last year and a 50% decrease from 10 years ago. And then the number of immunizations provided that was COVID-related was 19,946 in 2022, which is a 93% decrease from the year prior. The annual attendance at the Sedgwick County Zoo in 2022 was 637,411. It's a .5 slight increase from the year prior and a 25% increase from 10 years prior. The annual attendance at the Sedgwick County Park in 2022 was 1,1,942,000, which is a 10% decrease from the year prior, but a 9% increase from 10 years prior. And the number of Culture and Recreation Employees was 101 in 2022, which is a 6% decrease from the year prior and a 7% increase from 10 years prior. Interest Bank Arena in 2022 had 71 events. The annual attendance was 280,75 people, and the revenue to the county since opening, which includes SVOG funding and facility fee revenues, was $5,029,693. Public Work Service in 2022, the number of road miles that were improved was 97. It's a 7% decrease from the year prior and a 40% decrease from 10 years prior. The number of road miles maintained was 603, which is a .2% decrease from the year prior and a 1% increase from 10 years prior. The number of household hazardous waste tons that were disposed in 2022 was 639. That's a 19% decrease from the year prior and a 10% increase from 10 years prior. And the number of public work employees was 110 in 2022, which is a 7% decrease from the year prior and a 5% decrease from 10 years prior. And our General Government Services in 2022, the number of registered voters was 333,714, which is a 4% increase from the year prior and a 23% increase from 10 years prior. The number of real estate taxable parcels was 220,714. That's a 1% increase from the year prior and a 4% increase from 10 years prior. The number of documents filed with the Register of Deeds is 78,739, which is a 24% decrease from the year prior and a 5% decrease from 10 years prior. The number of real estate records that were processed in 2022 was 78,202, which is a 26% decrease from the year prior and a 1% increase from 10 years prior. And this is all done with General Government Employees in 2022, which was 410, which is a .2% decrease from the year prior and then a .2% increase from 10 years prior. So that was my last slide. With all of that information, what questions can I try to address for you?
Okay. Hope, thank you very much. This is good information for us as well as we round the corner in our budget process as we formulate this year. And I know a lot of that commissioners have been briefed on various parts of this before, not in a general accumulation here. But thank you for the presentation. There might be a question or two. Commissioner Beatty.
Just a comment, Hope. Thanks for the presentation. Very thorough. And congratulations to your staff and Chief Porezo, your staff, for all that you guys do. Six months I've been here, and I continue to tell people that the staff at Sedgwick County Management Staff are incredibly professional, incredibly professional and good at what you do. So in an era when people don't trust government, they don't trust how government stewards finances, that is not the case in Sedgwick County. You guys do a fantastic job, and you deserve a lot of credit. So thank you for the performance, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And thanks to Lindsey, Hope, everyone that's involved in this. Congratulations, you do a great job. Just a couple comments. One of the slides, it shows we're relying more on Property Tax than we had in the past. And then, just to bring that to reality, that's largely in part because of some actions that come from our state legislature that has reduced our income from other areas, and it requires us to rely more on Property Tax. Not that we want to do that, but I just want to make it clear that it is not our decision to do that. It's forced upon us. So thanks for that. Just want a little clarification.
Thank you.
The other thing that I think is a little misleading is when you briefed the Interest Bank Arena, and I like the Interest Bank Arena, okay? I'm not casting any stones whatsoever. But it shows we had a pretty good income, $5 million. But in reality, every bit of that was rolled back into the operations and maintenance of that facility. None of that came into our general fund whatsoever. So, and in addition, we've kind of depleted our reserves over that same period of time. So maybe another little part on that chart, just to show where we're at with the reserves and to identify that that money didn't roll back into our general fund. So those are the only two comments I have. Again, thanks for everything from the CFO and the Finance Department and your staff. I appreciate the status. Again, thanks to four of us for the audit. We appreciate you all very much. We rely on you to make sure that we're spending the taxpayers' money wisely. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, congratulations to you and your team. I am impressed again. I mean, every year, I'm impressed with this report. It's one of my favorite reports for the entire year. It makes me remember that Sedgwick County stands out a little bit in terms of government. Other governments, other counties, other cities would love to have this report. So this reflects on, not so much commissioners, I think, but maybe on our staff. You guys do a tremendous job of making good recommendations and managing what we have to do here, so thank you for that. Our number one thing we do, of course, is provide services, but how we do that is through budgeting, and so this is probably the most important report we do in an entire year. And as I reflect on what this says, there's a couple of slides that have me just small concerns here and there. I think some things we need to focus on as a county. But overall, if I was going to characterize this report, it shows that we're healthy and that we're planning ahead. We have good projections, and we're doing more with less, and I think the taxpayers ought to be happy with that. One slide I want to clarify, that's Slide 27. It talks about 98.2% collection rate on Property Taxes. Now, just for clarification, that's a first-year collection. So that means 98.2% of the people, when they receive their tax bill, went ahead and made that payment. And for those that did not do that, they end up, we work on the second, third, and fourth year where the county applies an interest rate, and they have to pay a delinquency penalty, if you will, for paying that late. And that number comes in at the fourth year. If you're looking at over a four-year period, how much of that total tax levy has been collected, it's much, much closer to 100%. Lindsey may be looking that up right now. I don't know.
It's on Page E10.
I don't have that book in front of me right now, but anyway, it's very, very close to 100%. And the amount of tax not collected is extremely small. And so I would encourage people not to pay their taxes late because those penalties are very punitive. And so I know that Property Tax Collection is a very difficult topic right now because our taxes are high in Kansas, and I think we have overreliance on Property Tax support to do the services we provide. So I think it certainly is a topic we have to continue talking about. But the idea that someone's getting by without paying taxes, it's just not, that's not the message on this slide I wanted to people to think that that happens. Again, thanks for a great job. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. And I just want to add on to something that Commissioner Dennis said. I've had a handful of people reach out to me lately about how much we rely on Property Taxes as well, and I think when we've talked about looking at our legislative platform next year, looking at how much the state mandates us to do versus how much they used to help us pay for that and how much we're not receiving those funds now. So that'll be, I think, a significant conversation later in the year that we'll start having to see how we can adjust that a little bit better because we are so heavily reliant on those Property Taxes. But thank you guys so much for the work that you do. I mean, it's so impressive. I've had the fortune that every year I've been here, we just have all these stellar awards that you guys are winning, and so you've made me look a lot better than maybe I deserve, but I very much appreciate that and just want you to know how much we all appreciate all the work that goes into this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Hope, any other comments? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to receive and file the 22 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Second.
Motion and a second. Be no comments or questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you.
You bet, Hope. So it's a motion and a second to have Commissioner Lopez serve as our delegate to the NACO Annual Conference in this summer. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. So congratulations, Sarah. You've done a great job before and made relevant. I think part of that NACO stuff was even helpful for landing the $51 million for Wichita State, and so who knows what you'll bring back this time. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item K, Report of the Board on Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on June 15th, 2023.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. Before I get started, I would like to say on behalf of purchasing, it has been a pleasure working with Mr. Mike Papoun. And Mike, we wish you a happy and healthy retirement. With that being said, the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of June 15th, we have six items that we're seeking your approval. Our first item is the Health EMS Subscription Renewal for Emergency Medical Services. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Sanzio Health EMS, and that's in the amount of $464,184, and it covers a period of five years. Our second item is Cash Vest Liquidity and Treasury Analyses for Division of Finance. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 661-22, and it's with the company Three Plus One, Company Incorporated. This total amount is an annual amount of $71,000. Item number three, Law Enforcement and Munition, Various Departments. And this recommendation is to utilize the State of Kansas contract. That's EVT 0006112, which is effective through the end of this year at the rates listed and has possible options to renew. And that's with the company Sunset Law Enforcement LLC. Item number four, Food Management Services for the Department of Corrections. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Benchmark Government Solutions LLC. They're doing business as Benchmark of Kansas LLC. And this is to establish contract pricing at the rates listed for three years with two one-year options to renew. Item number five is the 2023 through 2024 Recommended Insurance Renewals for Risk Management. And this recommendation is to accept the insurance premium renewals as listed, and that's for an estimated total of $2,589,323.24. And our final item is the Main Courthouse Cooling Tower Replacement for Project Services. Recommendation is to accept the bid from Central Consolidated Incorporated in the amount of $1,945,000. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval.
Okay. Are there any questions from the reported boards and bids? I don't see any. I'll make a motion that we approve the bids and contracts as proposed by Mr. Joe Thomas.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. And just for the, Commissioner Howell had to depart for, he was attending a funeral that is very important to him but to all of us. And he's representing us at a funeral this afternoon or this morning. Okay. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Chairman, good morning. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items L through V this morning.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not any, I make a motion that we approve consent items L through V.
Second.
Motion and a second. Being no questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And now we will, if it's okay, we will recess the general meeting and we will call the meeting to order of the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howell. Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Public Agenda. Is anybody from the audience, we didn't seem they sign up, anybody want to address the commission? I don't see any. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of May 3rd, 2023.
Commissioners, if it's all right, we will try to combine A and B, which is the approval of the fire minutes of May 3rd and May 24th.
Second.
Motion and a, I'll make that motion and Commissioner Dennis, second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item C, Resolution Appointing Five Members to the Fire District Number One Steering Council.
Okay. Mr. Papoun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun, County Counselor. I think we can handle items C and D together.
I would agree.
Before we talk about the nine appointments, I'll remind the commission a little bit about this Steering Council and the resolution that created it. It's too bad that Commissioner Howell couldn't be here for this item since he was the one essentially spearheaded this Steering Council. This was a resolution that created nine members of the board. Five members were to be recommended by cities within the fire district. And the different cities are laid out in the resolutions. Then we have two at-large members from the unincorporated area that are recommended to the County Commission for Approval by the Fire Chief. There's one at-large member that's recommended for appointment by the Sedgwick County Association of Cities. And then one at-large members that's recommended for appointment by an aircraft manufacturer company. The key element to all of these appointments is that these people either own property in the fire district or reside in the fire district and have done so for the past two years. Item C are the five appointments recommended by the different cities in the fire district. And the nominations by the cities are Russell Owen by the City of Goddard, Mike Strilo by the City of Mays, Katie Bowen by the City of Park City, Susan Sutton by the City of Hayesville, and Jim Benage by the City of Bel Air. Those are the five city recommendations. And then item D, we have the at-large appointments. Carl Amerin, at-large appointment number one, living in the, person living in the unincorporated area. Jeff Witherspoons, an at-large member that's been recommended by the Sedgwick County Association of Cities. Katie Jackman-Tindall, an at-large member who also lives in the unincorporated area. And Andy Hall, who's been nominated by Spirit Aero Systems as the at-large member for this Steering Council. We have carefully reviewed all of the recommended appointments to make sure that they qualified under the resolutions. Justin Wagner did that. And the resolutions are in proper form and ask you to approve the resolutions.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. This has been, to maybe some, has been a later nomination and appointment process. The process took a little longer than we thought, but I think it was well worth the, thank you, the chief and everybody for working through this to get to what we look like to be a very good nine-member of this Steering Council. And they've got some serious work ahead of them. I think a couple of them have some financial background as well, which is helpful. And so this, look forward to this Steering Committee. Thanks for the nomination, the names, and I'll make a motion that we approve the appointments that are listed in both item C and D.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Does anybody, commissioners have anything to add on the other, on the fire district meeting? I don't see any. So next item, there is no executive session, so we will adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One and we will now return from recess of the regular County Commission meeting. Next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Does anybody have a report from the committees? And I don't see any. So next item, please.
Other.
My favorite. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I have two things that I want to cover during other, and some of the other commissioners may want to add to the first item. Yesterday, Commissioner Lopez and Commissioner Beatty and I had an opportunity to go over to Future Ready. It's USD 259, but it's also a partnership between USD 259 and WSU and WSU Tech. And they do have support from organizations like Spirit and Textron and Bombardier. So it's a fantastic career and tech ed opportunity for our students. It's being offered right here in an old Dillon store over at North High. One of the things that, and I'm an old career and tech ed teacher, so I've got a little bias. When I was a career and tech ed teacher, everybody kept talking about college and career ready, but they'd always kind of cough before they said career ready. It was always stress in college. In addition, when I was on the Kansas State Board of Education, we said the same thing, college and career ready. But everybody discounted the career portion of it. And they were pushing kids into college that probably weren't going to be ready for college or able to get a degree in college, but they were incurring a huge amount of debt during that period of time. And then when they didn't finish college, then they're still sitting there with that debt. I am very happy that, and don't get me wrong, I strongly believe in college for those that want to go to college and get that degree. But the thing that they've identified now, which I really appreciate, is that now the students are giving choices. You do not need a four-year degree to make a good living. And they gave us a nice little chart. And these are, they identified a lot of different jobs, but I'm going to tell you about the ones that are being trained right now at the Future Ready Facility over at North High. A robot programmer can make $34 to $46 an hour. Tool and die maker can make $24 to $37 an hour. CNC machinist can make $22 to $29 an hour. A machine operator can make $24 to $31 an hour. So there are great opportunities out there for people that don't need a college degree in order to have a great living. So I appreciate all of the work from USD 259, WSU, WSU Tech, and all of the industries that are supporting that organization. I don't know if any other commissioners want to add to this before I go on to my second item.
Yeah, I would. Thank you. I think it's really important to also mention that this is free for students. They don't have to pay for books or tuition or anything. And they have, and they mentioned they had students that graduated with an associate's degree the week after they graduated high school, which is just, I mean, that's just incredible for the kids at 259. And I also love that they're opening this program up to the rest of the county. So kids, for instance, in Hayesville can go if there's an opening in their program. So this is, it's such, it's such an incredible thing that 259 is doing for the kids in our community. And I wish we had these kind of options when we were in school, but I'm very, very happy that this generation and the next will be able to utilize these. So thank you for letting me speak on it.
Thank you.
No, I think Commissioner Dennis and Commissioner Lopez really nailed it. And I wanted to emphasize that USD 259 is spearheading this in many regards, but it is open to other school districts in our community. And what an opportunity to come in and prepare yourself in high school so that when you're 18 years old and you graduate, you can enter the workforce and make a substantial living. So I appreciate everything that they're doing over there. And I think it is, again, another opportunity for workforce development here in Sedgwick County that we're going to reap benefits of this long term. So appreciate those guys.
And before you go to the next, I would just echo those comments. And we've talked about a priority in our community is the mental health crisis that we're working through combined. But right under that is workforce development. That's a common theme from everybody, and this is a huge step forward. Small byproduct, I understand, is that now often, as a result, some of the parent, parents of these students are coming in, knocking on the door, saying, well, wait a minute. My son or my daughter's getting this. What can I do as an adult of these and maybe get involved to get a better-paying job? So it's got great momentum. So thank you for representing us there and being a part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me touch on our second item. And the reason I'm bringing this up today and under other is that all five commissioners were invited to participate in a Zoom meeting recently. And of course, that would have entailed an open meeting if we'd done that. So Commissioner Howell, and unfortunately, he's already left, so he can't add to this. He and I, Commissioner Howell and I, attended this Zoom meeting. And it was initiated in behest of Congressman Todd Teheart. And so he asked us to participate in a conference call, and I'll go through some of the information on this Zoom meeting. But in the meeting was Todd Teheart, a gentleman named Robert Hartwell, and another gentleman named Ernie Gonzalez. Also on the call besides Commissioner Howell and myself were some commissioners from other counties that had military bases located in those counties. So what the intent of this was to look at payment in lieu of taxes for counties that have military bases within their counties. So before I went on to that conference call, I did pull up some information about McConnell. And remember, I'm retired military and I want to make sure that our defense budget meets the needs of the defense of our nation and it's not siphoned off for other things like sending tax money to counties. So let me give you a couple of facts about McConnell Air Force Base that I presented during this. McConnell Air Force Base has created 9,331 jobs. They have an $825 million a year economic impact on this region. They have a $180 million indirect impact. They're the fourth-largest employer in South and Central Kansas. They're great citizens. They volunteer for everything in our community. They impact our real estate, our local businesses. They serve as tutors, coaches, and so forth. So McConnell has a huge impact. And I do not want to ever do anything that impacts the partnership that we have with McConnell Air Force Base. We just voted today to ask for a Department of Defense grant for our emergency management facility. And again, I don't want to do anything that impacts that. So I took several notes from the meeting. According to Todd Teheart, Senator Marshall has already drafted a resolution and NACO is looking into it. He is asking for appropriations to allocate a pot of money. And so that kind of surprised me a little bit. What the ask was, and the reason I'm bringing this up in a public meeting is, again, the other three commissioners that are sitting here do not know any of this information. And I can't go around and tell them because then I'd violate an open meetings law. So this is their first opportunity to hear what I have to say today. So what he's asking for is each county that's involved to provide his consulting firm $3,000 a month. And the counties that are involved are Leavenworth, Saline, Riley, Geary, Johnson, Charney, Le Bette, Sedgwick, and Barton County. So that's a total of $27,000 per month that he's asking over the next year to two years to lobby for these counties. For that funding, they will introduce legislation, and they said they can get it passed so that we can receive funding by fiscal year 2025. They did reference something that I need Commissioner Lopez to look at when she goes to NACO. Evidently, there's a NACO Pilot Number Seven, and I don't know what that is. And he mentioned it. So if you can find out what NACO Pilot Number Seven is, it evidently has something to do with some kind of a policy that NACO is trying to push through to get payment in lieu of taxes for counties that have military bases. There were two commissioners on from Leavenworth County, and they seemed to be strongly in support of the proposal. They indicated that they have a 5,000-acre army base within their county. And they, I don't know how they came up with this, but the way I interpreted it is they thought that would net them $30 million a year on something as small as that. And I guarantee you, McConnell is a heck of a lot bigger and a lot more critical. I've been on Leavenworth a number of times, and McConnell is so much more than Leavenworth. Leavenworth is mainly a school. They seem to indicate that they done some analysis to come up with that, but it was not clear how that they would use a windfall of this amount for property taxes or where that money would go if they suddenly got it. So I think that a lot more analysis would have to be done to see if a county received large sums of money like that from the Department of Defense. The other worry that I have is that, remember, I'm a retired air force and defense is in my bloodstream. And anything that siphons away money from the Department of Defense, especially today with the stability of our world situation, that worries me. especially today with the the stability of our world situation, that worries me. So I do have some questions that I will need answered before that I would ever support this. What are the direct costs for Sedgwick County, oh, I'm sorry, let me repeat that. What are the direct costs that Sedgwick County incurs to provide services to DoD organizations? I don't know what our direct costs are. I don't know, does Fire go in there and support things? Does that cost us something? Does EMS go out there and, does that cost us something? I I don't know what our direct costs are and and how we would quantify that, so that's that's one of the questions that I have. I don't know how the Kansas delegation feels about this issue, and that was a question I wrote yesterday before I went to the dinner last night, and so while I was at dinner last night, I had an opportunity to to interact with a number of folks, so Jennifer Basinger was there representing Senator Marshall, and so I asked her to tell me what Senator Marshall's thoughts are on this, and she did not know, but she said she'd look into it. I did not see anyone from Senator Moran's office there last night, so I wasn't able to ask them. Roger Erickson was there from Congressman Estes' office, he was not aware of this, and but he said he would check into it, so I I did start the process of trying to find out what our Kansas delegation at the federal level was thinking about this idea, because I don't know. If they're totally against it, then there's no reason for us to press forward, but again, we we need to ask a bunch of people what their thoughts are on that. I don't know what our state legislators feel about this issue, so last night, Ty Masterson was there, the Senator, the President, President of the Senate, and he'd never heard of it, and he thought it was a bad idea, honestly. Dan Hawkins was there, he'd never heard of this proposal before, his initial thought was it was a bad idea. We had, our lobbyist, Watkins, was there, and he'd never heard of it before, but he was going to keep his ear to the ground, so I don't, right now, unless our our federal delegation's on board and our state delegation's on board, I I can't say that I would recommend it to any of the commissioners that weren't on this. The other question is, what does the chamber feel about this? Because this impacts a lot of our businesses. What does GWP think about this? What do our late, local leaders think about this idea? We have to think of each and every one of those. Is this an issue that NACO, large urban counties should take up? And if they have better information, we need that before we can make any decision or I can make any recommendation to the other commissioners. And who else do we need to talk to to consider this issue? So Commissioner Howell and I did not commit anything during that meeting, we couldn't commit, because there was only two of us, and, but we wanted to bring the information back to you. I talked to Commissioner Howell before the meeting this morning and let him know I was going to bring this up during other, so that he wouldn't be surprised, but there's just so many questions right now. They said they were going to send us the slides that they presented during the meeting, but I have not received the slides yet, so I can't provide those to you, but it's an ongoing discussion, and I don't know if any other commissioners would like to be on the on the conference next time, but my position right now is to listen, learn, and not commit to anything, so I just wanted to give you feedback on that, because it it could impact us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, maybe there'll be a, are they going to submit a formal proposal to us, or is that, now it's just in discussion?
It it appeared that they were going to submit a formal proposal requesting three thousand dollars a month for them to do this to all nine counties, and at that time, we would have to have all of you involved, and so I want to make sure everybody was informed before we ever got to that point.
Okay. Well, thank you for the report. I think it's fine with me that you and Commissioner Howell continue to be our, our lay-in on it, maybe engage somebody from finance and legal on the next call, if it's if it's at that stage, you can help make that decision, okay?
Yeah, we need somebody from Lindsay, she's she's left, but we do need somebody like Brent or Lindsay or somebody on the call, maybe the manager on the call, too, because that doesn't create an open meetings violation. More than two commissioners would be a problem for us.
Right. Well, thanks for the update, the report. If you have another, I'll just briefly describe where I was at for the annual international show, airshow. It was in Paris, it rotates between Paris and outside of London every year. So this was, it started in nineteen oh nine, this was the fifty-fourth airshow, World Air Show in, International Air Show in Paris, and attended that, and it was a kind of a quick trip, I was just there mainly for all of the business agenda items that were going on there. The first time I'd been there, I was told it was very impressive, and so I, and I think some of you have been at various trade shows and other things, and exhibits and whatever, and and I have, in my private business, been been to a lot of things like that, but not one of this magnitude, and I'll just comment that that I was so proud that we in the Wichita area in Kansas, we, we claim ourselves as the air capital of the world, and it is noted there, and it is incredibly important that we have a presence at the, at the World Air Show if we claim to be air capital of the world, and there are twenty-five hundred exhibitors companies there, that's a lot of, they had like five auditoriums of space, but hundred and forty thousand attendees to this from all over the world. We had fifty, and it's a million five hundred thousand square feet of exhibit space, so it's overwhelming. I want to thank, there was, the Wichita delegation alone was about fifty people that GWP had coordinated, but there was so many, that's not, that's not counting, that's not counting, that's all right, that's not, that's not counting the Spirit and Textron contingent and Bombardier contingent and other suppliers in the aviation industry that had their own contingent there, so I gladly think that it's, was well over probably a couple of hundred from Kansas area. Senator Moran was, continues to be a, a, a person of great presence. There was ten, over ten U.S. senators out of the hundred that were there. Senator Moran sponsored a kickoff reception where fantastic, there was, there was six or seven, that I think, six or seven U.S. Congress people there, and Senator Moran's position in the Senate right now is vitally crucial in the defense and and air industry, but he was there, he was there for a few days, he was actually come by the, the Kansas contingency booth, spent some time there. Congressman Estes, Governor Kelly was present in a number of cases, in a number of meetings, and Mayor Whipple was there, and Dr. Mumma from Wichita State and his group were there, and there was just a tremendous amount of of individual meetings with opportunity and and expansion on some of these companies. I wasn't in all the meetings, because they had so many meetings set up besides just the general, the deal, so incredibly impressive, I think, for me, I've always been a fan of how we changed the model of supporting GWP to take over our, our economic development arm of the Sedgwick County and the City of Wichita, and and what they do, and that's proven, I think you've all seen some of the improvement versus the old model that was going on, but I tell you, that, that Jeff Flure and Andrew Nave and their group, I I was further, I want to thank them personally, they just had everything set up, give you an agenda, hey, can you be here at this meeting at this place at one-thirty, two-thirty, and receptions that were were incredibly good, so I just, I'm very proud, I want to thank my colleagues here at the bench, when I asked them if if they would be supportive of me attending, it's the first time, I think a Sedgwick County person has been represented there, and I I felt it was very positive, I want to thank you all for supporting my attendance to be there, and be glad to, I just got back, so, but it's, be glad to go into further detail with any of you that that have more questions, but there'll be some follow-up meeting, I'm sure, with a number of, number of people, so just wanted to share that, so, yep.
Well, I want to thank Chairman Meitzner for attending for us. Sedgwick County in the past really wasn't part of the drivers of economic development in this region. If we go back to Cargill, Sedgwick County wasn't even at the table when Cargill was being discussed. Now, thanks to a lot of efforts from a lot of people in our county government, our staff, and the commissioners, we are at the table and I think making a difference in economic development, so I just want to thank Chairman Meitzner for representing us so well at the Paris Air Show, because it's it's critical that we are involved in things like this, so thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. And if any of you have been to Paris, it's a historic city, and the roads are very narrow, and it's, if I was in code enforcement there, I would, it would be, the restrooms, the ADA, it's like, really, this is a difference in, in our country, in our stuff versus a city is old, and they're going to host the Olympics next summer, so they're all gearing up for that, too, but hundred and fifty thousand people invading one, one venue is just pretty amazing stuff, so thank you again for your support, and you're right, Sedgwick County, we are, we play a role in the development of, between SCAC and REAP and all the things that we're involved in, I think it's, it's important that we play our role, we don't have to be the lead all the time, but but being at the table and helping, as we've referred earlier, with with Sarah's participation on the WSU grant and and other things we have going on, so we are, we play a role, and it's important, so. Okay, anything else under other? I don't see anything, so anything else need to come before the board at this time? Other than, now we're going to go to a, Mike, you got any last comments before the gavel goes down? I don't know, let's just wait a while, shall we wait, make him, okay, we, okay, all right, brother, we stand adjourned, thank you.